Checking YouTube audio, one, two, three, four, on a test, one, two, three, four. All right, roll call, please.
All right, Mayor Eiker.
Here.
Commissioner Cahalan.
Here.
Commissioner Jashinsky.
Here.
Alder Person Grimmer.
Here.
Commissioner Cranky.
Here.
Commissioner Merrick.
Here.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
And it looks like Commissioner Housman is excused. City Planner Amy Barrows. And it looks like the Building Inspector Scott Hussinger is also excused.
All right, thank you. So we have discussion, action in the following minutes for August 28th, our regular meeting minutes and the public hearing from that last Plan Commission.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, or abstentions? Okay, minutes are passed. So now I'd like to have anybody in the audience come up for citizens' comments on things that are on the consent agenda item. And that would be for 638 Milwaukee Street or 2446 Heritage Drive. If there's any citizens' comments that would like to be made on those two properties. Seeing none, citizens' comments for items on the consent agenda are now closed. Action on the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, abstentions? Consent agenda items A and B are now approved. So if you're here for Della Field Properties LLC and Milnita LLC for 638 Milwaukee Street, you have been approved. And for 2846 Heritage Drive, Mark Allen Gridiron Power Solutions, you have also been approved. So there's nothing else to do here at this meeting tonight unless you'd like to stay and watch. Thank you. There's no public hearings. So now I'd like to open it up for any citizens' comments for items other than what was on the consent agenda items, any at all. Yes, Mr. Giles. Giles. I'll get it right. And although we know you, please state your name and address again.
Terry Giles, 1607 Weber Court, where I live with my wife and have for 41 years. First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to, for the consideration you have given me. As a resident and an engineer, I also commend you on the selection of the 2.25% that you're currently using. I strongly agree that any accessory building should be governed by the lot size. And I wanted to state that, in case you didn't know, the recommended 53,000 square foot that I recommended, that's simply 1,200 square feet divided by the 2.25%. And that's the point at which the 2.25% begins to control the size of the building on larger lots. So that's the beginning point. Again, I'd like to thank you for the allowing me to comment that I've made and appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments for any items at all? Okay, seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. There's no unfinished business? New business? None, so we'll go on to item 11, comprehensive plan zoning and ordinance revision. Item 11A is discussion and action to schedule a public hearing at the request of Terry Giles at 1607 Weber Court to amend the Chapter 52 zoning ordinance of the municipal code regarding the accessory structure size limitations of Section 52-110. Amy, would you like to give us a little background and update on what we're doing?
Okay. So just as a little reminder of what has occurred so far, Terry did come in during the June and July Plan Commission meetings to conceptually request a text amendment to the accessory structure size provisions. Those provisions were recently modified by the city, making the requirements a little bit more restrictive. And so he did come in, Plan Commission reviewed minutes from all of the past meetings related to that recent text amendment, and did ultimately suggest that the recently adopted ordinance provisions did adequately address the structure size limitations, and that Plan Commission was not in favor of the applicant amending the ordinance. The applicant did choose to move forward, so he is submitting a formal application at this time to be considered. And if he has a complete application, then you would schedule a public hearing for next meeting, you know, before doing that. If you have any feedback that you want to provide to him, that would be helpful because he has the opportunity to modify, withdraw, what have you, his application before we publish it in the paper. But otherwise, the public hearing would be next month at the end of October. And then, following the public hearing, Plan Commission's recommendation would go to the council in November. So on the, it's not on the screen, but in the packet, now it's on the screen. The applicant did redline the ordinance, so he took the ordinance that was recently adopted and just redlined the provisions that he would like to change. After reading it, I don't believe subsection C needs to change at all. In fact, so he's just switched between 3,200 square feet and 53,333 square feet. The maximum would be 1,200 square feet. But that's actually more restrictive than allowing the Plan Commission approval. So I don't think any, unless I'm missing something, I don't think letter C needs to change at all. And you want it to be larger than 32,000 square feet because the provision before that refers to lots between 10,000 and 32,000. So then the next layer would be more than 32,000. So then essentially what he's proposing is to keep the 2.25%, but instead of only allowing an exception by Plan Commission to exceed 1,200 square feet at three acres, he would like that to be reduced to 53,333 square foot lot size, which is 1.2 acres as a matter of reference. And then just as a reminder, the three acre lot size provision was really taken by the Plan Commission, understanding that most lots in the city that are three acres or less are part of a subdivision property in the RE1, RE2, I think you've got RE3, I should be looking at a zoning map. Yeah, RE2, RE3, even RE1 are all three acres or less in size. And then, in order to house horses, you need a minimum of three acres. So then you get into the larger barn-type structures where an exception may be more appropriate. And the provisions don't apply to business districts. And so with that, I would, if Terry doesn't have anything else to add as the applicant, it's worth, you know, giving them the opportunity or providing any extra feedback you may have before next month's meeting.
I have a couple of thoughts on this. As I went back this last month and just examined our work, which I think was very thoughtful and went through a lot of steps, the one element that stuck out to me was this category, which is between 32,000 square feet and one foot short of three acres, so 130,000 some square feet. So the difference between those two is four times. In other words, the 130,000 square feet is four times the size of the minimum square footage, but we're requiring the same 1,200 square foot max on the size of a building. And it seems to me, when I reflect on that, that there might be some opportunity to have that category split. One thought I had is you could have the 2.25%, but up to a certain square footage, depending upon where you fall in that range. And I won't bore you with all the math. But where I came out on this personally was, I think what we've done is thoughtful. It seems to me, from my perspective, to just approve the suggestion Mr. Giles has, I'm not sure that's been carefully thought out and vetted by this group. So one thought I had was, you know, does it make sense to have a small work group? Keep, carry on with what we've approved, have a small work group of staff and maybe a couple other people, and just reevaluate especially that one zone where there's such a wide variation, and see if there's some room to have, you know, more than just 1,200 square feet. Maybe you can get up to a higher number and still keep your 2.25%. So that's a suggestion I have. I'm not in favor of approving this today, but I think it deserves more thought. And that can take place during this work group and then come back if that makes sense to the mayor or the rest of the body, so.
Yeah, I guess there's a little danger in creating, you know, ad hoc committees in that, in that. Well, one is populating them, and then populating with the people that have the appropriate perspective, and then wouldn't create like quorum issues too with a subcommittee. But we kind of functioned as that group ourselves over the past nine months coming, you know, the nine months previous, prior to doing this study. I felt like that was directed to me, so I'm answering.
It wasn't at all. I just, you're the mayor, so.
Yeah, no, but so just to give you, yeah, just to give you some insight, you know, from experience that, I think we had really thoughtful conversations. I think we can pull from those. And I think we did when we looked at this last month or the month before in reviewing the minutes and that from those meetings. I personally love to go to leverage other communities too when I look at this, you know, these types of things and see, are we an outlier? You know, we do that for our fees, we do that for other zoning elements too. And I, you know, I took a look at Oconomowoc and that, I'll do some more research to confirm that there's no exceptions or ways to petition it beyond like a zoning appeals thing. But their limit for any residential lot is 1,000 square feet for an accessory building and a maximum of two. And I don't even know that we have a maximum number, we just have a collective number.
Two.
We have two? Okay. So we're actually less restrictive than one of our biggest neighbors. But again, it doesn't mean that they're right and that we need to lean on them. But this is something that I think we should try to rely on the process and having the public hearing and anything anyone else wants to kind of get feedback from neighbors and that during the course between now and this next meeting, I think would be the right course to pursue. And then we can, you know, we don't have to make a decision at the next meeting either if we feel like we need to vet it more like you suggested.
That's a point I was going to make. If we could have the public hearing, get their input, and then the next month.
Yeah.
Give us some time to look at other neighboring communities.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's pretty helpful to leverage. And, you know, again, and I don't want to go through all the minutes again, but I do remember pretty distinctly that one of the things that we're looking at is the difference in categories between the residential properties up to three acres and then beyond. Once you got past that, you started talking about other inherent. you started talking about other inherent rights to board horses and have other, other things that would require some of these structures. And so we've got that flexibility built into our, our code, and a lot of these things come with, and they are batched. And sometimes maybe it doesn't seem reasonable, but they're batched from one zoning district to the next. And there's sometimes leaps and bounds of what you can do between them. So it's worth looking at the maps, where the zoning issues, you know, where the zones are and stuff. And I think the public hearing will give a good insight into that if we get the right feedback.
Just some clarification for me, Tim. Somewhat new at this, but I think what you said makes a lot of sense. But when we schedule a public hearing, it's specific to Mr. Giles' request, right? Whether we want to approve or amend this up to 2,178 square feet as he suggests. Because that's the part that at least causes me to take a step back and say, because I agree with you, that seems to be doing what you're suggesting we shouldn't be doing. Is it on that issue, or is it just getting general feedback on the overall?
It's not like a referendum vote. It's, that's, the public hearing is to vet that, and I believe that we've got some flexibility. And if we wanted to alter it and adapt it to, like, if we want to change it 53,000 to 75,000 or whatever, we could, I'm fairly certain, and that'll be a question we can, I'll answer and make sure, spread, you know, get it out to the committee here. But I'm fairly certain that we can take feedback from the public hearing and modify what's been presented to something that we can make a recommendation, recommendation to pass, because we're not the final body either that does it. It goes to the council and after us. Does that, does that sound right, Amy?
One thing, I think it's important, I didn't put it in this month's packet, it was in the previous packets when we talked about the matter. But I do, there is a table that compares adjacent communities. I'm just going to read them off, because if you think of any other communities you want me to look into before next month, I can. But it includes Town of Genesee, Town of Dellafield, Village of Heartland, Village of Oconomowoc Lake, Village of Summit, City of Oconomowoc, and Village of McGuanego. And then there was Waukesha County was also in a report. Are there any other communities you want me to look into that you can think of?
Is Peewaqui worth being at there?
I can look at the city and village of Peewaqui.
That seems pretty broad to me. I mean, it's a good combination of.
I agree.
Very good sample.
They've got similar geography, they've got lakes, they've got rural, they've got, so.
Okay. So I'll make sure I add that to the packet.
And just as a reminder, what his original kind of plans were off by how much? What was the square foot on some of his original ideas?
1,900, over 1,900 square feet. He's allowed 1,200.
Any other discussion or recommendation? I mean, if someone wants to make a motion to schedule the public hearing for next month, that would work.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for this regard at the next Plan Commission meeting.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, or abstentions? Okay, we have a public hearing scheduled, Mr. Giles, for next month.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, next item. Discussion, action, to schedule a public hearing at the request of city staff to amend the text of Chapter 52 zoning ordinance of the municipal code regarding provisions related to automobile service stations which are currently allowed as conditional uses in Section 52-142. And this comes as part of some of what has been going on for a while in reviewing conditional uses in different zoning districts. You want to fill us in, Amy?
Sure. Okay, so right now, the conditional use section allows automobile service stations and auto washes, so I don't want to make sure we remember that, in any business or industrial district as a conditional use. Again, the only requirement, specific requirement, is that no gasoline pump or accessory equipment is, can be closer than 30 feet to a right-of-way. And so after doing a little analysis, staff is recommending that the CBD districts, B1 districts, which are, if you read the purpose and intent, are meant to be a neighborhood type district, and the B5 office and research commercial districts be removed from the available districts. With that said, there is a gas station downtown. There's also the QuickTrip on 83 and 94. The one downtown is in CBD1, the one at 83 and 94 is in B1, I think. The colors are close on the zoning map, so I can come back with and clarify that. And then there's the repair shops downtown too, several of them. And it does look like minor repair shops are included in the definition for a service center. So the, and there would be no auto washes impacted by the amendments. And the bubbles request that has come in conceptually would not be impacted by this either. So the, I guess I would recommend, you know, one of two things, either the existing gas stations, if you made no edits to the text, would just be legal non-conforming uses, or if they're a substantial part of the community and you don't want them to go over the lifetime of them, you could put as a permitted use, existing gas stations that existed as of whatever date this amendment gets recorded, then they can remain, they can be improved upon, remodeled, repaired, without restriction, but no new gas stations or repair shops would be allowed, if that makes sense. So I'm just looking for your feedback, and if it all looks good, then at the next month's meeting, well, you could schedule a public hearing tonight, and then at the next month's meeting, we would put draft language together in advance of that. So, but if, if, after you provide feedback, you do need to initiate the text amendment, so you would be the applicant to Plan Commission and schedule a hearing.
So this is something that we kind of discovered going through, like I said, the conditional uses and that, and just the discussion. Again, we talked about drive-throughs before. What's, what's in the best interest of the city's master plan and other things as far as desirable uses in these different areas? And I was actually surprised to see that B5 allowed gas stations. I didn't think it did. But based on the, and I think the cover for those types of things in the past has been the idea that these were conditional uses and that we could apply our own standards and what the master plan intent was prior to, I think, 2019 or 17, whenever the law changed on conditional uses, where it flipped the burden onto the city to prove you had to meet the conditional uses. And we don't have a list of conditions for these, for these particular businesses. So instead of eliminating them, I suggested that we should look at perhaps taking them out of certain areas we don't think they belong, like B1, like B5, I don't know if that's the highest desirable use for what we've always intended for like to be a kind of an office area, or our central business district here downtown. It's, it's not a particular, we're not trying to give anyone a monopoly, but it's not a particularly effective, efficient use of space for what's a congested area, is to have another gas station with trucks for deliveries, et cetera. So that's kind of, that's why this came up.
Just have a point I want to clarify. Amy, in your report, first paragraph, getting down near the bottom, it says the proposed ordinance language could allow existing automobile service stations to remain as a legal conforming use?
Yeah.
I thought you said non-conforming before.
No, if you said nothing, if you didn't put specific language in, it would be a legal non-conforming use. If you put in there that they're allowed, then they would be a conforming use, but new ones wouldn't be allowed.
Thanks.
I personally think that's a reasonable thing to put in, is to allow them to be a conforming use, so that there wouldn't be an odd restriction that would prevent them from doing something. We don't know what, how these businesses are going to morph in the future, to make some sort of improvement that would be a big asset to the community as opposed to making them stick or languish or being competitive, you know, like Tom's Auto Body or Daybreak or whatever. We'd want them to be able to make improvements under reasonable use. That's my thought.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Go for it.
Go for it.
Go for it. So I would make a motion to initiate the text amendments and schedule the public hearing then.
So moved.
A second.
Is that Ed?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, abstentions? Okay, public hearing scheduled and with text amendments for our next meeting. And let's see, what do we have next? Reports of city officials, correspondence, look in the packet. Planner, what do you have for us?
Just a reminder that the dates for November and December were modified. So we've got November 20th as a Plan Commission meeting and December 18th. October is your normal last Wednesday of the month.
All right. And our Building Inspector, no report from him tonight. And Plan Commission meetings and deadlines, regular meeting is, next meeting is October 30th, and submittal for that deadline is, deadline for that is October 2nd. That would be next, what, Wednesday? And seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 7:25 PM.
Wow.
I like this new mayor, huh?
That's a way to record.
That's called cat on the way home.